These people here for the six o'clock meeting, but you want to remind us in comments.
Good afternoon and welcome to the August 2nd, 2:00 PM business meeting of the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors. We are so glad to have all of you with us today. We will start each, start this meeting like we do all with an invocation that will be given today by Pastor David White from Hope Church, and then Mr. Lumpkins will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
Thank you. Please join me as we pray. Lord God, we're here today, and we thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for the beautiful gift of a summer afternoon. And as we've come and we have brought ideas and interests and concerns, we pray for your wisdom and your presence. We're aware, Lord, that you know everything, and by comparison, we know quite little. And we ask for your presence, that this meeting, as well as others that happen in this room, would contribute to a thriving county and a shared common humanity, as we all seek life together. We pray for those who have brought their interests, and also for the supervisors, that you would give wisdom and charity and discernment and insight to the items at hand today. We pray in your name. Amen.
Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, just a, just a quick comment today. I don't know how many of you are, were fans, but, or realize that Sunday was the day that Hanna-Barbera indicated that George Jefferson would be born. Jetson, George Jetson. Yeah, so somewhere in the world on Sunday, George Jetson was born. And while the Jetson brought us a lot of great things, they brought us flat-screen TVs, video calls, tablets, robotic vacuums, movable walkways. They brought us a lot of things, but they didn't bring us the ability to replicate food. That has not yet come to fruition. And I bring that up because, you know, these days, there's a lot to worry about. If you look at the news, there's a lot of things that are concerning. And I've been paying an awful lot of attention, living in agricultural county, around, regarding the concerns around the food shortage. I'm a big proponent of know what you control. One of the things that we do control is how we can support our local farmers and our local ag community. I was broken-hearted today to hear that Danny Allen, if you're familiar with him, he has a farm stand on Cottage Hill Farms. He shut down for the season based on the weather, you know, just typical being a farmer. He was being very supportive, but seed quality and weather conditions have caused him to have to shut down his stand early. So today is the farmer's market, just right across the street. So I just encourage, and that's all my comments. I am very excited to do this presentation. When I moved to Goochlin County, you know, Goochlin, Anita Barnes was synonymous with Goochlin County. So I'm very excited to, probably one of the most fun parts of this role is to be able to present these resolutions. So if I'm gonna come down if need, if you'll meet me down front, and Mr. Carpenter, if you please read it.
Whereas it is the desire of the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors to give well-deserved acknowledgement and recognition to Mrs. Anita Barnes, who has rendered exemplary service to the Board of Supervisors, county staff, and citizens of Goochlin County. And whereas Anita Barnes announced her resignation as zoning administrator for Goochlin County after more than 33 years of diligent service. And whereas Anita Barnes began her tenure with Goochlin County on July 10th, 1989, and was promoted to zoning administrator in October of 2010. And whereas Anita Barnes has worked in the planning office since it was a two-person office and has extensive institutional knowledge of its working, has continuously provided outstanding customer service to the citizens of Goochlin and the development community. And whereas Anita Barnes has been the gatekeeper for all development applications, was responsible for execution of the subdivision ordinance, organized and maintained files for all of the planning department, including creating ongoing records and scanning in older information. And whereas Anita Barnes has contributed to further successes of Goochlin County by serving as a volunteer and to many local organizations, including the development of Hidden Rock Park and countless hours serving animal rescue and care organizations in the county. And whereas Anita Barnes' ability to engage, her expertise, initiative, and willingness to take on large challenges is a testament to her ability to lead and inspire effectively. And whereas Anita Barnes has exhibited the most outstanding fashion sense while being kind and helpful to all, now therefore be it resolved that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors hereby commends, recognizes, appreciates, and sincerely thanks Mrs. Anita Barnes for her customer service and dedication to Goochlin County and offers her their best wishes.
Board, do you have a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for taking it. Okay, now is the time for our county administrators' comments. Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just a few comments for you this afternoon. Hopefully you had a chance to notice outside, our new service boat. The chief will be discussing in a little greater detail when he has time for comments, but I encourage everyone to take a look at it and see the capability that we now have in providing services to our citizens, especially on water. Also, if you had planned and looked forward to the concert we had scheduled this past weekend, the amount of rain we've received had made the park not suitable, so it has been rescheduled. We're shooting for a mid-September date to reschedule the July concert. The August concert is still going to be held at the previously set date. Also, members, you have in front of you a, an update on where we are with fiber and broadband in the county. I would encourage you to look forward. The next meeting, we're scheduled to have representatives from Firefly here to give us some more in-depth and in-detail update on where we are with broadband rollout in Goochlin County. And finally, as you know, tonight is National Night Out. Our sheriff is very invested and involved with this. We encourage every member of our community to stop by the courthouse. Either, they start at 6:00, so if you're here for the meeting tonight at 6:00, when you're done, you're welcome to go there. And anybody who's not here, we encourage you to go there as well. And, Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Board, is there any request to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. And now is the time for our business meeting citizen comment. This is for things that aren't on the, open for public hearing tonight, so for you to come forward and speak for three minutes on topics that are concerning Goochlin County. And just press the green button when you speak and give us your name and address for the record.
All right. Linda Moore, 2164 Prophet Road, Mannequin Sabbath. That's in District 4. Still in District 4. I would like to thank each and every one of y'all for the outstanding job that you do, day in and day out, the long hours that you all put in. I will not be here tonight. I'm going to National Night Out, okay? That being said, I appreciate the hard work of Joanne Hunter and Anita Barnes to help keep us on task as to what is real and what is not real. I don't know if you've been aware of the controversy and the misinformation that has been sent out to most of my folks who didn't know that, that their email address would continue past the Wilton acquisition. Most of you all, quite a few of you all, were aware that that list was not supposed to be used past the Wilton, but it has been revised, and yet the gentleman has sent out blast, three and four a day for the last three weeks, that people don't understand what he's talking about, and they do get concerned. That being said, this is a free country, and we have the right to view our opinions. That being said, please, Joanne Hunter has, has allowed us to understand the process in a reasonable way that everybody can understand. Joanne also put out your board notes, that, staff notes, that are thorough and to the point. Thank you very much. Love y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Before my three minutes starts, I, I do want to echo the commendation to Ms. Barnes, though she took one for the team because 32 years ago, she helped me get my building permit that allowed me to move to Goochlin, and so don't hold that against her, is would be my only request. Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannequin Road, I am a director for the Monakin Soil and Water Conservation Direct District, and also a Goochlin Farm Bureau Director. I want to thank the board for providing us with revised memorandum of understanding operations between Monakin and the board. We will be looking at that on our September 15th, I'm sorry, August 15th meeting. And so, once we have been able to understand what you would like us to do as your partner, I have every confidence that we will have an executed copy back to you, but the process continues. I want to mention that in the past, people have sometimes said, "Well, the farmers are putting soil amendments down that are messing up my well water." And my question has always been, "Well, how was your well water before the soil amendments were put down?" And they never could say. So on September 19th is the well water testing program that the Extension Office does. So put that on your calendar. It's about a $60 investment. Virginia Tech runs it, but don't complain about your well water. After something happens, if you don't know what it was like before something happened, would be my counsel. I also mentioned that the Goochlin Farm Bureau has its producers' meeting that same night, September 19th. Let me just say, you don't have to be a farmer to be a member of the Farm Bureau. It's a $40 a year investment. It's more than insurance. They have some wonderful, we have some wonderful discounts. I'll just pass that along. I'm now gonna make comments as a private citizen, not for Monakin or Goochlin Farm Bureau. And I want to say that the studies that are going on for both the courthouse and Centerville, the village studies, are pretty impressive. I gotta hurry up here. But my request is that, as aspirational and inspirational as they are, before we invest any resources into rebranding or branding the counties, I did a lot of research, and on the screen, and I think you have a hard copy, are some localities here in Virginia, and then there's some official slogans and unofficial slogans. And the opportunity is to take the letters in the far-left column and match them to their official slogans. So Virginia Beach A would be what? And, and my suggestion is that the unofficial slogans are sometimes easier to understand than are the official slogans. And there's a locality about 20 miles east of us that's gonna spend a half million dollars promoting their slogan. And I have no concerns that this board would ever invest silly money in, in putting a branding together. And as much as I like the idea that we are looking at our counties, at our villages, I, I just say, let's go slow, and let's understand who we are before we try and make us into, and imagined who we are. So my red light went off, and I will sit down.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Any other citizens wishing to come forward? Okay, not. I will close the citizen comment period. Board, in your packet, we have our meeting minutes from the June 7th meeting. Can I get a motion for approval, or any corrections need to be made?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the June 7th, 2002 regular Board of Supervisors meeting minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Lascalette.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now moving to our reports. Our first up, as each month, is our partners at the Virginia Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Carpenter, Marshall Wynn with VDOT. This month, we had 155 work orders and completed 153 of them, had eight callouts, after-hour callouts. The tree debris cleanup from the tornado is completed. Glad to get that behind us. Second, primary mow, we've completed our second cycle and plan on a third cycle coming up in the next week or two. The secondary mow cycle has been completed, and we'll start on our second cycle probably September, first week, second week in September, for the final mow of the season. Crossover at Route 6 for the Mannequin Company 1's fire station is completed. Everything turned out pretty good. It was an easy job to get done, and I hope the chief likes it. Okay, yeah, okay. Other than that, we've been doing normal maintenance work throughout the month and everything. Look forward to some drier weather, actually, with all these storms we've been having. Do know that, I wanted to bring up the speed study at Route 6 in Haynesville-Fife. Supposed to have that study in by the end of this week, and once I get it, I'll forward it on to y'all and Ms. Lascalette, because I know she's interested in that. Yes, that's it. That's the one. Corridor study is ongoing on Fairgrounds Road. That should be complete by the first of the year. We'll send that out once we get it. We do have a speed study going on on Westview, Route 643. Should get that by the end of this week, and I'll forward that on. The pavement work on Whitehall, Route 673, I think they're still putting shoulderstone down. I don't have an anticipated date of when they go do the pavement marking. The problem with pavement marking, if you get a rain today, you gotta wait 48 hours of dry weather before they can put the pavement marking down, or it won't stick. I know we've had some issues with some flaggers out there. I've been in communication with my contract managers, and Lehigh is having a tough time with flaggers. I can tell you that. But if you see anything, I know Ms. Lascalette called me the other day. I know Mr. Spunhauer sent some pictures to me the other day. Just keep sending them to me, and I'll get with construction staff and everything. Other than that, I really don't have anything else, not unless y'all have any questions.
Ms. Lascalette?
I just would like to say, thank you very much for the work you're doing on Whitehall. I know it's not in my district, only by a little piece, but it's great work. It really is a nice job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Lumpkins, could you, could you give me a little idea of what the corridor safety study should show? I mean, do you look at like, anticipated growth? What, what?
They're looking at the geom, geometry of the road, curvature, all that kind of stuff, traffic, how much traffic, the type of traffic, that sort of thing.
You look at current, current volumes?
Yes, yes.
Existing volumes, not, not, not volumes based on anticipated growth?
It possibly is. This first corridor study we've done in Goochlin County, I know we paved Fairgrounds Road, what was it, three or four years ago, and that was about $900,000 investment. For us, we did, you know, Fairgrounds and Oilville Road at the same time.
So you said this is the first corridor safety study down in Goochlin?
For, for, for a secondary road, yes.
For a secondary road, right. So what, what is it, just a little preview, what's the deliverable gonna tell us? Is it gonna tell us, road is safe, you have problems?
It's gonna, it's gonna have that, all that type of information on it.
Just telling us areas of concern and?
Correct.
Okay.
I know we have some pretty deep fills in different areas along there. I don't know, you know, widening fairgrounds would be a big undertaking, for sure, because you'd have to buy you, you know, right away.
Are they gonna get into some of that, that?
They're gonna look, they're looking to all of that, so. But that information will be coming out, and I'll probably forward it on to Austin and, and Ms. Hunter, so.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else? Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I'll just add my thanks to the chief's on that cut through on the median Patterson. That seemed like you turned that around pretty quickly. I assume it came in on budget, and so, thanks very much for that.
Yeah. Grass germinated real fast, too. It's green over there.
Okay. All right. Thank you so, so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Chief Ferguson with Fire and Rescue.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eddie Ferguson, Fire Rescue Chief. Certainly, I have already sent the report in for Fire Rescue, and I'd like to start this afternoon with a special presentation. Always gives me a great pleasure to say how proud I am of the folks who staffed the Fire Rescue Department, both their career and volunteer members, and for the great work that they do. The boat is out front, on display, a new boat, newest style water rescue boat. And so, today's presentation does center around water rescue, recent events that occurred in the county. But I think it would only be appropriate to send our thoughts and prayers to all those in Kentucky who are affected by the, the massive flooding out there, those who've lost their lives, their property, and also the emergency responders who are on the job out there doing all they can do to, to mitigate that situation. I'd like to take you back in time a little bit on how the water rescue team got started here in Goochlin County. It goes back almost, actually, 50 years. Recently, Rosalind Ryan and the Goochlin Gazette had an article about the historic floods of 1972 with Hurricane Agnes when they came to the county, and that's exactly what started the water rescue team in the county. We've got great historians, and they have kept great minutes, and I want to read you a passage out of the history of the water rescue team. "On June 22nd, 1972, the torrential rains from Hurricane Agnes caused the James River to become a raging force escaping from its banks to raise havoc with anything in its path. During the night, while most of Goochlin citizens were snug in their homes, State Trooper Tom Sneed put in a call for assistance to get help for two people on a car stranded on the south side of the bridge at Columbia. Volunteer firemen and rescue squadsmen from Goochlin County responded to Trooper Sneed's call for assistance. There were no boats or any other water rescue equipment in the department at that particular time. Several firemen attempted to form a rope brigade in order to reach the stranded couple. This attempt resulted in the two men being washed away by the swift current and almost lost their lives. One was pulled ashore, and the second would spend a couple hours up a tree until rescue. Finally, Spencer Wynn, who was the game warden, brought in his boat with the help of Roscoe Myers to get a couple off the car, and then came back and got the rescue squadsman out of the tree. The secret to this operation was a boat. Realizing the desperation need for boats and other water rescue equipment in the county, Fire Chief Earl Henry instructed county rescue captains Jake Profit and Ben Johnson to find a suitable boat and purchase it. And that's how the water rescue team got started. And we've had a water rescue team all these years. The life of the water rescue team over the many years would have to credit, would have to go to the late Assistant Fire Chief Tucker Hill. That was his passion with the organization, one of many, but certainly, certainly water rescue. So I'll take you back to the, the weekend that started off the summer there at Memorial Day here in the county. If you recall, the James River was very high. The James River was running almost 12 feet that weekend. Normally, the James River runs anywhere from one to two feet. At Cartisville, it may be close to three. Today, it's just running just under three feet. That weekend, being a holiday weekend and lots of recreational traffic on the James River, we assumed that air services may be needed, and so we actually stepped up our services and actually sent a crew down to the maiden's boat landing and tried to contact citizens and explain to them the dangers of getting in the water, because the water was unusually high, very muddy, the current was very dangerously swift, and there were lots of debris floating down the river, large trees in some cases, and, and other things, creating strainers in the water that can actually drown the person. The crew spent the, spent the afternoon and morning there talking to the folks in the boat landing, and by 3:00, we were getting water rescue calls. Altogether, that weekend, we had eight rescues throughout Sunday and then into Monday, where we rescued eight people from the James River, including one pet. I'll tell you that the, the entire water rescue team is to be commended for what they did that weekend, all of the personnel hours and training and equipment and everything that went into that to be able to have the successful operations. But there was one rescue in particular out of the eight that rose to a, a new level. At this time, I would like to, to ask firefighter Morgan Kingston to come forward with Deputy Chief Mike Watkins and Italian Chief Blake Markey. So keep in mind, on that day, we had already completed four rescues at the Palatine State Park. We had traveled upstream, and there was, there was an entire party on inner tubes that were caught in the trees in the swift water there at Palatine State Park. We made those rescues, we came back to the maiden's boat landing with our boats, debriefed that call, and then about an hour later, the water rescue team, Virginia State Police helicopter Med Flight 1, and Palatine County Fire Rescue were dispatched back to the James River to the Palatine State Park for an adult in distress that was hanging in the trees with no PFD and could not swim. Further information revealed that the person was on an inner tube attempting to float the river when they were caught in the current and swept into a low-lying tree that we refer to as a strainer, something that traps a person, can wash them down and drown, cause a person to drown. The rest of her party was disconnected from her. They continued downstream in the swift current, and they were unable to help. Boats 605, 601, and 602 launched at maiden's and traveled upstream. Boats 605 and 601 reached the victim in record time, finding her in distress, fatigue, and panicking. After losing sight of the victim going underwater, and without hesitation for his own safety, firefighter Morgan Kingston, also a swift water operations-level technician, leapt from Boat 5 into the water, pulling the victim back up to the water surface, and then safely into Boat 601. The current was so swift at Palatine State Park, the decision was made to transport the victim back to the maiden's boat landing, where she could be rejoined with her, her party. I received a, a call from Lieutenant Andrews that afternoon, who, who basically brought this to my attention. Deputy Chief Gordon was actually the incident commander on this particular incident. And this is, this is definitely has risen to the level of a life save. And I would like to, at this time, I would like to give this to Chief Watkins to present to firefighter Kingston, and I'd like to read you what this is. Goochlin County Department of Fire Rescue Emergency Services, a fire rescue lifesaver will... Award presented to firefighter Morgan D. Kingston, Courthouse Company 5A Shift, for the successful application of fire and emergency medical services procedures on May 29, 2022. On this day, you responded as part of the water rescue team to Incident 22052900 for water rescue on the James River near Palatine State Park. On this day, the river was running 12 feet at flood stage. A person who could not swim was reported to be caught in a tree in the water and was not wearing a life jacket. While effecting the boat rescue, without hesitation, you leapt from Boat 605 into the muddy swift current of the James River, swimming for and rescuing the victim who was in obvious distress, caught in a strainer who went underneath the water while trying to grab for a flotation device that was being thrown. You reached the victim, secured the flotation device, and assisted them safely into the boat, saving their life. Your selfless and courageous actions resulted in saving a life.
Great job.
So we also plan at a future time with the fire rescue function to award a unit citation to the water rescue team for all the work that they did that weekend. Congratulations again to firefighter Kingston for the great job that he did. So we have submitted the report ahead of the board meeting and certainly I have a few highlights to mention, and then certainly any questions that you may have. It's a busy time for fire rescue. We're seeing an increase in calls. Our calls are up today by 17% based on where they were last year at the exact same time. July was one of our top busiest months ever for avalanche transports. And we also saw the same thing with calls in general, 405 incidents in July compared to 344 last July in 2021. I'd like to let you know that the department was recognized again with an American Heart Association Mission Lifeline Award. This award was a Silver Plus Award, which is based on our ability to deliver cardiac care to folks who are having heart attacks and strokes. It has to do with some of the right resources, getting the call, emergency medical dispatched, get the aspirin onboard ahead of time if it's a heart attack and they fit the criteria, as well as arriving on the scene in a timely manner and doing the 12-lead EKG and getting that into the hospital, activating the catheterization lab. This is truly a team recognition. It takes everyone in the fire rescue department, also the sheriff's office, the emergency 911 dispatchers, to do their job in order to be eligible for this type of recognition by the American Heart Association. I do want to let you know that our primary medevac resource, Virginia State Police, MS Med Flight 1, they are experiencing pilot shortages and they have reduced their services hours. Hours are reduced from midnight to 8:00 in the morning, where the program, both in Richmond and also in Abington, is out of service. I know the state police is actively recruiting pilots to get the operation back open to 24/7. I would just like to say that we have full support for the Virginia State Police and hope they can get the program reopened 24 hours as quickly as possible. In the meantime, we have taken a look at the air medical resources that can serve Gooslin County, including Life Evac from VCU, Pegasus, and HCA Air Care Eagle that will be called during the times when Med Flight is not available, out of service. This coming weekend, August the 5th through the 7th, is the Virginia Tax Free Weekend for emergency preparedness items. So if you're looking to create an emergency kit, that three-day supply that FEMA recommends that you have on hand for natural disasters and emergencies, this will be an opportunity to buy those items possibly tax-free. It also is worth mentioning that if you have a kit, that sometimes those items do expire, so you have to update them periodically. The COVID positivity rate is still up, it's almost 23% as of today, and the hospitals are still full in many cases. We continue to have long wait times, taking patients into the emergency departments, patient waits on their stretcher, while the emergency department staff is doing all they can to treat the folks who are already there, as well as to find a bed for the patient that we're bringing in. Please know that the critical patients do move to the front of that process so that they get care immediately. In conjunction with the sheriff's office and Gooslin County Schools, we did a successful tactical emergency casualty care class the end of June, where we trained for the unthinkable, the active threat type situation that could occur in any public building or certainly the schools. That was a long weekend, Friday night class, all day Saturday, all day Sunday. We had many people from the community come out and participate as role players. Mr. Carpenter actually participated as a role player, which we really appreciated. We mulraged the folks and we made the scenarios as realistically as possible. And again, want to thank Sheriff Creasy, as well as Dr. Riley, and all of the instructors from the group that taught the class. Recently, the CERT team graduated. We had seven members of our community graduated from the CERT class that was just held that Robin Hillman did. I was gonna mention also how thankful we are for the median break in front of Company 1. We're also bringing in new members, both volunteers, and we're making conditional job offers to fill their vacant positions for the career side of the department. Just want to mention that on the evening, Saturday evening of October the 8th, at the back parking lot of Gooslin High School, we are planning for a fire rescue show. This will be a family fun evening of fire rescue demonstrations for the public, and we're getting that all together now. You'll see more advertisement about that going forward. If there's other citizens in the county that needs a smoke alarm, then we certainly have those at no cost. And we always want to say that we recruit for volunteer personnel year-round, every day, and if there are members who want to join the organization, then we certainly need more volunteers. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I think when I got on the board, there were dozens of dry hydrants that weren't functional. And I saw in your report this year, the annual testing of the dry hydrants, and as somebody whose district relies completely on those types of hydrants for water supplies, I think that is fantastic and the progress we've made over the last few years in getting them up to speed, getting them functional and usable is fantastic.
Well, I appreciate that comment. In a rural area, those dry hydrants are critical to water supply for fires with no public or county fire hydrants. A lot of the credit goes to the private property owners that allow their lakes and ponds and streams to be accessible for that purpose. Just over the weekend, another one of those dry hydrants on the list was repaired and paid for and full by the homeowners association. And so we brought even another one in the west end of the county back online. Some of the dry hydrants in recent years have been replaced with county fire hydrants. Where there once was no county water, all of a sudden, you know, there's a fire hydrant across the street from one of our dry hydrants. And so some of those, we actually took out of service because of county water is already there and on top of that, in some cases, lots of sediment in the ponds. But we still have over 60 functioning dry hydrants across the county, and we're always looking for an opportunity. If someone has a pond or a lake or stream and they'd like to talk to us about dry hydrants, then we'd be glad to see if the area is suitable for one. We always could use more of those. Thank you for the comment.
Just thank you and your team for everything you do, and today was just a testament of, you know, the dedication and heroism that you guys perform on a daily basis, so thank you.
Well, thank you for your support. We appreciate that, and hats off to all the fire rescue members of the department, so, for doing a great job.
Mr. Lumpkins wants to...
No, I was just gonna thank you for everything. And October 8, you said?
Yes, sir. October the 8th.
And I was sorry to hear that Med Flight needs pilots. I was hoping maybe they needed nurse, flight nurses. If they ever do, let me know. I know some...
Well, I know a good one also, and I think we know the same person that would be really good at that.
So I think the real question is, will we be expecting to see a helicopter in the next CIP request?
No, sir, not at all, but we would just ask for your support from Med Flight to get reinstated for the 24-hour services. Anything we can do to support the state police, that would be the request, so, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Next, we have our Director of Human Resources, Shaletha Dyson, to talk about the new staff that we have coming onboard.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, members of the board. Shaletha Dyson, HR Director. On behalf of the county administration, I am pleased to announce some new hires for the month of July or late June in animal protection, community development, and Parks and Recreation. On June 27, 2022, Kenneth Johnston joined the Department of Animal Protection as a part-time shelter attendant. Mr. Johnston was previously employed with Cartisville Cemetery Association as a groundskeeper. On June 28, 2022, Deborah Boyd, because she just loved to hear so much, rejoined us as in the Department of Community Development as a part-time environmental manager. Ms. Burke retired from the county as an environmental manager in September 2020 and has returned to assist with various special projects. On June 29, 2022, Addison Winston joined the Department of Parks and Recreation as a part-time recreation assistant. Ms. Winston comes to Gooslin from Greenswell Growers, where she was an assistant on behalf of the Health and Food and Safety, the grower department, and the head of packing chain and department. Welcome to Gooslin County.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dyson. The next two reports, Planning and Development and Accounts Payable, are in your packet. However, I would like to take, as handed something by our county attorney, the District 4 application for August 4th has been withdrawn. This was the application by Markel Eagle requesting rezoning the agricultural 2 residential planned unit development with proffered conditions on Pouncy Track Road. So that has been withdrawn by the applicant. Okay, all right, and moving right along.
Question down there. I think it was, which one was that?
It's on the planning condition.
Yes.
Yep.
It won't be heard on Thursday, which is what it was scheduled for.
All right, board reports. Anybody have any updates? And Summers, kind of... Mr. Chair of RTP.
Yeah, great.
You are.
I did meet with the Chair of Plan RVA, and I'm looking forward to meeting with the Chair of the CVTA and initial indications. We don't have a meeting this month, so this week, so we'll get back started September. But yeah, off to a good start, and I think I'm looking forward to, I've been very receptive from the other chairs to look at ways of, you know, coordinating the three boards and coordinating communications and also other projects, so looking forward to it. But nothing, nothing major to report, and again, we'll meet in September is our next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lumpkins, and congratulations on your chairmanship.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep, Mr. Chair. On the Finance and Audit Committee meeting, we had a meeting immediately preceding this meeting, and we discussed several things. We did the kickoff for the audit for the fiscal year ended 6/30/22, which ended about a month or so ago, and that'll be due on November 30th to the state. In the past, Board, we've scheduled a special meeting mid-November because they're due on the 30th of November, and the auditors typically don't finish their work by our early November board meeting. You know, we've scheduled a special to get it in on time, so there's no asterisk and we got it in late. So I believe they're gonna look into this, but I believe they've moved the date that that's due from November 30th to December 15th. If that's true, and if that's the case, then we may not have to have that special meeting in November that we've had in the past. So that's one change. We also discussed a couple of the items that we have on new business, which follows these reports, and I'll hold my comments for those until we consider the new business items. And the last thing was, we did some preliminary discussion about the headwinds that may be forming for the following year's budget, so we'll start that process soon. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. For my report, a pretty light agenda for the CVTA. We did, however, have our first election after our inaugural election, and Mr. Kevin Carroll from Chesterfield County was elected as Chair, and Mayor LeVar Stoney from the city of Richmond was elected as Vice Chair. So those were the big items coming out of the CVTA. All right, we will now move into our consent agenda items, or we're just moving, we're crushing this. Mr. Carpenter will read each of the items in the consent agenda board, then we will decide if we want to, I'll take a motion to take them as a group or individually, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have two items today on the consent agenda. The first item is a resolution supporting a smart scale applications for transportation project funding. This would be a resolution that the board would submit to a smart scale showing its approval and its support for a requested reallocation of funds to go towards the approved project at the I-64 interchange. The second resolution amends the fiscal year county budget. It appropriates $75,000 in the county general fund and $121,000 in the social services fund. The $75,000 would go towards costs that were incurred in the Parks and Recreation Department. Those costs were overshadowed by the increase in revenue as well. And the $121,000 in social services fund was an unbudgeted amount that went towards expenditures that were approved by the board earlier. The funding would come from grant funds they've already received. No change in the bottom line of the budget for either one of these.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Board, do we have a motion or questions?
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All I would say is, just for those of you that were here or watched the meeting from last month, you know that Gooslin County was awarded several projects. Some of the projects were fully funded, however, other projects, it was dollars to go towards our smart scale applications. So smart scale, the state looks at, and we're gonna be talking a lot about transportation today, I think, the state talks about how these projects get approved, and one of the ways is the amount of dollars that localities can bring to help match and offset some of the costs. So they want to thank the staff for working these applications. We've been very successful this year due to our new staff and how they've been working with these applications, and I also want to thank VITAT for working with us to fill out some of these applications and help us to understand the best way to tell the actual picture so that it could be, the impact of these projects can be fully seen, so just want to call those folks out. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Without getting, and I know it can get extremely complicated, without getting too far in the weeds, what is the nature of our application for I-64 and Route 623?
Current, is that...
What is our application for?
You're opening the can of worms. So we have decided to, I think, come on up, Ms. Hunter. You're gonna say it better than I will.
Good afternoon, Joanne Hunter, Deputy County Administrator. The application that was filed for the smart scale application was for a four-lane DDI.
All right, thank you. That's what I needed to hear.
Thank you. I actually could have probably said that. I didn't know, I wanted you to get her questions rather than me afterwards. All right, board, any other discussion? All right. This can be voiceful, right? So all those in favor of the consent agenda items as presented, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Moving on into new business, and we will welcome back Ms. Shaletha Dyson to talk about the salary benchmark study.
Good to see you guys again so soon. So yeah, so I am here today to go into the benchmark study. So as you guys know, that we have already started a process. We had some county staff that kind of helped push us across the finish line with the benchmark study. So today, we actually have the consultant from Evergreen, Stacy Whishell, who's actually gonna give the overview of the benchmark and where we stand at this point. So I can bring her up now.
All right, I'm gonna just, because they're all different. Oh, oh, okay. Wait, wrong way. Ah, there we go. Well, thank you for having me here today, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name's Stacy Whishell with Evergreen Solutions, and we did your class and com study for the county, started that earlier this year, and we'll walk you through the full project here and bring you on to the recommendations. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. I'm bad about wondering when I talk. I'm bad about wondering when I talk, so I'll try to stay right here in front of the microphone. So this presentation will provide you with an overview of the study. So we'll remind everybody what the study goals were, what the project phases were, and then obviously bring you to those recommendations. So for the study goals for the county, the county wanted to make sure that we took a good look at the current plan, how it's being used, identify if there's any areas of concern, any compression, inequities internally, to look at your plan in comparison to market peers, to see where do you stand competitively? Are you in line with market peers? Have you fallen behind? Are you leading the market? And then ultimately, take all of that information, all of that data, and then produce recommendations for you that give you a plan that fit your needs right now, that address any of those concerns, and that also is flexible enough moving forward that you don't outgrow this plan within two years' time. And I spent 24 years in public sector service, so I will also always say, we want to put forward a plan that is fiscally sustainable, okay? Now, our projects are kind of, they go through phases. Now, these phases are not distinct, like these kind of rectangles up here on the board, they overlap in how they kind of move forward there. It starts off with the project initiation, it's that data collection, which leads us to what we call our assessment of current conditions. We have several meetings with your project team here, we met with some of the department heads virtually, we did surveys of your staff, we actually administered it pretty broadly, got some good results, good input from that, to get input from staff. We did your market study and did that analysis and decided where do you need to be, did I hit that? Did it advance without me? Okay. Decided where you needed to be with comparison to the market, and then developed that implementation strategy, solution file, and then ultimately, your final report. Now, for the survey that we conducted, and I've got all of the data behind this, which I've already supplied over, so you can see the rest of the details that are in there. It was an anonymous survey, but we asked staff, started off, all the surveys always start off with, what brought you here? What brought you to the county? Why did you want to come to work here? Why have you stayed? And then we get into the other questions about the concerns or things and recommendations that they may have. And you can see here on the chart, people came here because of location. A lot of your folks are from the general area. This is home. They like the benefits, the retirement provided by the county, the stability, advancement opportunities. The compensation was originally one of the things that brought staff here, but that's also, you're going to see where they've got some concern too moving forward. Some of the stuff that's kept them here is the relationships they have, it's the leadership, it's the support that they have from your staff here. Now, we start talking about the concern that came up during that survey. Your concern was some people felt like they were falling behind peer organizations, not as competitive as the county used to be. Concern with, or really more than anything unfamiliar with just compensation practices, so just maybe an opportunity to do some internal education there. Job descriptions need to be updated, that's something that we see everywhere. I can tell even my own, we updated them when I had turnover in a position. It's just one of those things that can kind of get away from you. Request for additional career path opportunities, that was common in multiple departments. And then request to consider additional fringe benefits. Things that were mentioned was, look at how you use flex time, is more remote work or some kind of a hybrid schedule possible? Somebody mentioned some wellness classes. I don't really know what the wellness classes they were looking for, but you know, something that spoke to kind of health and benefit, and after a couple of years of some uncertainties in COVID, I think people are really focused on that, the health and wellness. Now, I mentioned assessment of current conditions, that's where all of our projects start, and this can be based on that data that was collected the first of March. So that's our snapshot in time. At that point, we had 280 employees that were included as part of the study, you had 136 classification titles that were being used, two different pay plans, you had a general employee pay plan and a sheriff's pay plan, and you had 27 pay grades with the general, range spread's about 60%, midpoint progression about 7%. On the sheriff's side, 21 pay grades, range spread about 78%, midpoint progression 5%, and that was a 30-step system as opposed to the open range of the general. So in looking at your plan, we found that it generally follows best practices. It's well structured, it's well organized. The biggest thing that we found is you had just slipped some in competitiveness with the market, and we'll see that on the market survey here in just a minute. I found that about 94% of your employees were compensated below midpoint. That's a reflection typically of more turnover, and I think a lot of us have seen a lot more turnover during the last couple of years. Did see that you had salary closely tied with tenure, so as people were here longer, they were further along in those pay grades. And compression within pay grades was found to be minimal. I think it was about three pay grades where we saw some compression, but not very much. So good job with your current plan.
For those that may not be familiar with HR terms, can you explain compression?
Yeah, absolutely. So compression, we looked at a couple of different things. The one I was referring to there, we were looking at, shut that down, I can't talk with both hands, we were looking at where people are in relation to everybody else. That compression was looking at, has somebody been here 10 years and somebody here one year, or they paid the same? So that's what we were looking at, and we found very little of that in your current The most of something we called the job assessment tool, so those that participated in that here with your staff will remember it. It's a long survey, it's one of those workforce surveys, and it's getting at those five different job factors, leadership, working condition, complexity, decision-making. It's asking the employee about their roles in their current position in relation to those different factors. Based on their answers, and then the supervisor's review, we can create a hierarchy of all of your classifications, all in relation to each other. So everything from your entry level all the way up to the top county administrators, okay? It allows us to create a 0 to 1,000, reality about 200 to 1,000, and it lets us kind of create that structure. That's a multi-week process. We allow staff, I think we allowed your staff about two, three weeks to complete that and gave supervisors another two weeks to review and provide comments on top of. We create the hierarchy, then we give it back to the project team we were working with to review and make any edits if needed, because what we're looking at is a paper exercise. So we ask them to review to make sure operationally, do we have to make any edits? And then that, combined with the market survey data, combined with the conversations that we've had, that's what lets us create the structure for you moving forward. Now, your market survey, market survey was launched back in April. We have nine peers that we surveyed as a part of this study, and we did look at cost of living in relation to that, because we wanted to see where we match in a dollar for a dollar, okay? We used 60 of your classifications as our benchmarks, so those are the classifications we took to those peers to match them up, to see what their pay ranges were. And we collected a little more than 320 data points altogether, okay? At the market average, that's the 50th percentile, the county was found to be about 15% below market at each, that minimum, the midpoint and the max, all right? The classifications, when we take those to market, we're not looking at a job title to job title, we're looking at job descriptions to job descriptions. And if I don't have a good match, then we don't include it in the survey. So I've got more data than the 320, but they weren't good matches, all right? And I'll add also one more thing onto that, too. When we're looking at that survey data and we're looking at salary data, if it's outside a 40% differential from your salary data, I also don't include that. That's too much of an outlier, and it will skew your numbers. All right, on to recommendations. So let's talk about your compensation changes, based on being competitive at the market average. That's what we built the plan for, that's where we want you to be. We want to maintain that consistency in your structure, we want to allow for flexibility moving forward, we're going to recommend the two pay plans, the general pay plan and then public safety pay plan. For your classifications, you know, like I mentioned earlier, there was a request from multiple departments to create more career path opportunities, so folks in their chosen field had more growth potential, they can move from a 1 to a 2 to a 3, or a junior to a senior type position. These are some of the ones that were created as a result of the study, you'll see these here. Other departments had the request also, public safety was definitely one of them. So what we did is made sure in that plan moving forward, there's flexibility to create them as those emerging needs happen. So you've got room in there to do that moving forward, and we're here for a year, so as those changes happen, there's questions on a classification, where would you slot this? What would this look like? We're available to help provide that technical support and input. So you proposed, this is steps, sorry about that, I should say open range plan up top there. This is your general pay plan. We're going to maintain that open range design, 27 pay grades, so this is for all of your non-public safety staff, range spreads about 70%, grade progression about 6%. So you maintain your consistency throughout, we've adjusted your pay ranges here, the men's and the maxes, to better meet market conditions, so you're once again competitive with the market at that 50th percentile. Your public safety plan, 21 pay grades, range spread 70%. The grade progression here varies, not surprisingly, because of the types of classifications that are included in public safety, especially as you move through the ranks of fire, emergency response, and police. Those increasing levels of complexities, roles, responsibilities, risk management require a bigger jump in those pay grades. We're looking at a 25-step system, and your step progression here, on average, is about Now, when talking about how you crosswalk over into a new pay plan, implement a new pay plan, we went through several different options and scenarios. The one we landed here, though, is on hire-year parity. Hire-year parity will allow you to transfer people from their current pay grades onto the new ones. These are all linear regression models, and it's looking at a 30-year career trajectory. So it's going to look at their, so you've got a 30-year career line, it's going to look at their current salaries, their years of service, line them over and match them up. And so what this will do is keep you from having compression issues moving forward, okay? If you just, there are several other options that we considered, a lot of those were going to put you at a place where you would have had folks a little closer together than they should have been. Recommendations moving forward, adopt the classification changes and the plan as described. Transition your employees over to the new proposed pay plan, utilizing that option we talked about, the hire-year parity. We're going to be working with your HR office to actually update all of your job descriptions, and that includes everything from your FLSA status, your current, your new pay grades, and any other updates to KSAs. Conduct small-scale surveys moving forward, especially in those areas, if you have difficulties hiring or retaining a classification, do a spot check against the market, see, has it slipped, has conditions changed? Conduct a comprehensive class every five to seven years, if you're doing those spot checks annually, every five to seven years should be all you need for a full comprehensive like what we did here. HR documents, public sector documents, those are living documents, so update, review, keep them relevant moving forward. Finalizing tasks, based on any input or comments, feedback, we'll get that report finalized, get that up to you here in the next two days. Provide training to study, in the study methodology, to your HR so they can maintain this moving forward, and then work, like I said earlier, on the job descriptions. And that is it. If there's any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Mr. Longton's first on the green light.
Good, thank you, this is helpful. And your last slide there, did you come up from Tallahassee?
I did.
Okay. I kind of have my questions, I just wrote them in order, so that some of your later slides maybe helped me address some of the bullets I had earlier, so I'm just going to kind of follow in the order. Where do you get the CLL data from the other jurisdictions, cost of living data? Where does that come from?
That comes from the federal bureau that we get that from.
And what does it look at? Cost of housing?
Oh, so what factors go into it? Yeah, so it is, it's housing, it is medical care, it's groceries, it's all of those factors, they take multiple factors into account.
But probably there's not that much difference in some of those things, housing maybe by jurisdiction.
Housing's the big one.
Yeah.
Housing really is.
So you said, in response to Mr. Spoonhauer's question, when you were defining or explaining compression in the context, you said you used, you said it's time, you said person's time with the county, so if you had somebody that had been with the county less, you didn't want them, you know, close in salary to somebody that had been longer. So that prompted the question, I think maybe, I think maybe it's addressed later, but if I've worked for somewhere for nine years and I come over here to Goochlin, if it's somebody, and I join and somebody's been there for 10 years, I've been there for one, they've been here for 10, it's not a problem if they're close together, right? If I'm close together with someone who's been here the same amount of time.
Someone's going to be your compensation philosophy and how you want to hire and bring people on. I wouldn't say somebody with the county that's got 10 years, somebody outside of the county with 10 years, you wouldn't bring them right on top of each other, because there's still value of the tenure that the individual has here. So typically, what you'll see is, like with your open range system, you would bring them in somewhere within that first quartile, but not right typically on top of the tenure person.
So that's the philosophy you're saying, so I think, I mean, we have jobs that are hard to fill because of the, I mean, the free, hopefully free marketplace.
Right.
I mean, I hope our HR department has some flexibility, like if you're advertising something and it's not working.
To make adjustments.
To maybe bring in, if somebody has great experience somewhere else and we want that person here because we're having trouble filling the openings.
Yeah, I would never say put a philosophy in place that is very rigid. I actually, guidelines for how you hire is definitely something that you want to have in place.
Is that part of your program to help with that? Is that part of?
That's part of the final recommendation chapter is when you're bringing in new hires, things to consider.
Right, because we still want to have a plan that's going to guide our HR so that we can always, I think you're going to always want to be able to point to something, this is why I'm making the decision.
Right.
This is the county's philosophy and our approach.
Absolutely. Yeah, you want to have something to point to, but you also want to be able to have enough flexibility in meet your needs.
Exactly. So did you assess the accuracy of our job descriptions? When you were describing your methodology, probably around, I don't know, slide eight or nine, I jotted down, did you assess the accuracy of our job descriptions? Because I think that's kind of, our job descriptions need to be accurate if you're going, if you're going to have a successful outcome of your work.
Part of that comes in from that job assessment tool that we administer to everybody. We have people respond there, you know, what does your position do? What is your level of decision-making? What is the complexity? What is work safety, work complexities?
So you took that information before you ran this comparison to other job descriptions?
Yes, yeah. Yep, there's overlap with all of those processes that go in.
But of course, if another county has a job description totally messed up, then that's just something we can't control.
Right.
You added, you were talking about 70 classifications, you added classifications. When you did that, one slide, it was interesting, you had, I liked, somebody being able to have a career path is so key, in particular, say, I don't want to be a leader like schools, I don't want to be a assistant principal, but how do I grow in my career? So when you, my question on this one was, did you, as part of this, you didn't just come up with these lists here, but I hope you change job descriptions.
Some of these actually don't have job descriptions yet that we've seen, because they're newer created, so we'll work with you guys at the conclusion of the project to help write those.
But you're going to want to have a job description, and I would imagine that the goal here is, because these things like senior and director and things like that, they're paths from a current existing position, right, for folks to grow? Is that the objective here?
Right, yeah. And so, yeah, you're right, so you'll have, you know, a common one that people see a lot of is equipment operator 123, what differentiates them? You know, administrative assistant 123s, or the seniors versus the plans examiner. You know, what are the different skills you need to be one versus the other? So the matrices are something that will help you come up with as well.
Your next slide, slide 13. Does a grade, does a grade represent a year in service?
No, so these are, this one is an open range system, so these are your pay grades. So 101 is your entry level pay grade, and then as you increase with complexities of those classifications, that brings you down to the 127.
So if I come in as grade 101 and I stay for a year, I don't go to grade 102, that's a totally different.
That's something very different, right. So this is, classifications are assigned to a grade.
Okay, so to avoid compression, we need to move, that grade progression is just, again, what it says, it's not anything to do with COLA. We just make, the idea to avoid compression is to, when we do a COLA adjustment, we just be consistent across.
To be consistent.
Okay. Okay. You started talking your lingo there, when you got to slide 15.
Lingo.
Higher-year parity, linear progression model. Could you, I mean, maybe I'll just get with, I'll get with the MBA after this to help me.
Probably use the least squared method to do the regression.
It's not a math person like I am.
This struck me as important, but I didn't want to, didn't want to start thinking about that too much when you were moving on, but I think this is important, is it not, with the recommended range based on, yeah. So you said there are different ways to approach this, and we used a linear, linear?
So linear regression model.
Linear regression model.
Right, which is really how all the options are, but then it's, the placement varies depending on what model you use. So they are linear regression models, and so thinking way back, way back to algebra, right? Way, way back. But when you're, so a linear regression model is going to create you a line, and what this one's doing is it's looking at the length of that person's current career, their hire date, and it's looking at their current salaries, and it's lining them up on where you would anticipate them being, based on those two factors along that line. So you're taking into account time and money.
Okay. And that's a preferred model in most public sector settings, or is it, if it's not just kind of generically the preferred model, why did you pick this over another model?
Over some of the other ones? Well, there's a couple others, higher-year parity, there's a couple of other parity options that we could have looked at as well. We didn't have, your HR system doesn't allow us to have both hire date and classification date, so I couldn't do anything based on class date. So higher-year date was really the best option moving forward for you guys to ensure with a transition to new plan, we didn't create compression. We didn't want to bring people right on top of each other. There are other models that we could have looked at with, called comp ratios, that's where you're looking at the midpoint. There's also bring-to-new-minimums. Bring-to-new-minimum is, all that is, is just implementing a new plan, and if somebody's already making more than a minimum, then there's no change. And that doesn't address the needs you have right now to be more competitive with those salaries.
Last one, and this is kind of a philosophy last note that I took, you said at one point, I think it was, I didn't write slide number down, but you said, folks end up, if you follow something that ends up closer than you should have them, do you remember that? You said, something, you bring them closer together than you should have them.
With some of the other models, time-wise.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, some of them would have created that compression that we wanted to avoid.
And so you're around for a year to help us?
I'm here for a year.
And I noticed you said, training our HR on, you said, training our HR on implementation. Will we have something that will also be a guide that she can handle, you know, hand to her assistants? And I mean, that's probably, is that part of what deliverable, is to help us with something that outlasts the knowledge of our current HR director?
Yeah, so there is a file we'll provide there at the end, with any changes, any final tweaks that we need to make, it'll have all your new employee data in there, so all of that will be updated, so it's no longer a snapshot from back in March. And then we'll turn that over, and it's very simple, I take all of the fussiness out of it, very straightforward to use.
Thank y'all for indulging me with the questions. This is such an important piece, I think we're all, I don't think, I know we're excited about this, and it's moving us in a needed and a good direction, and that's why, I know a lot of work's gone in before now, we're now at the tail end, but it's important enough that I just wanted to have an even deeper understanding and comfort level with it. I appreciate your work.
Absolutely, and like, any questions, you're welcome to reach out, call or email.
Thank you.
Good job, Ms. Lumpkin. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, now you got me going on this slide here. So you create the dispersion, you run the regression line, and you find that there's data points above and below the line. That's how you create the line. And then the suggestion here, it looks like, is that for folks that materially, standard deviations below the line, they would be moved to the next highest step. So what you've done then is taken the data from below the regression line and elevated it more closely to the regression line, which then you can create a new regression line, because the ones that are above are still above.
But you're not doing that last part, are you?
No.
Are you still with me?
Yeah, I'm still with you.
What do you do with the people above? Are you suggesting, the only way to preserve that regression line is to collapse both? If you collapse one side, you move the line.
No, it's a hold harmless approach, so we would never recommend a reduction in anybody's salaries.
So you do the regression line, move the people that blow up, and then disregard the regression line from then forward?
Well, so, yeah, so at that point, that's just your implementation approach, but then moving forward, now you've got your people in the new plan, all of the classifications are slotted in that hierarchy, and so through attrition, as you people, as people either turn over, they get promoted, then you're going to correct as you go forward.
Okay, so it's an initial look, not a maintenance-type look?
Exactly.
Where you're continuing to regress the line, it's just, you look at it once, adopt it, and then?
And leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Are you going to be nice?
Of course, I'm always nice, especially nice to Mr. Peterson.
Can he appreciate that?
It's so cool when I can actually, I'm a lawyer, and I can hang with the MBA finance guy and follow it, but I asked this, I asked this question in some of the two-by-twos, I said, did our analysis lead to the discovery of people that are overpaid? And the answer was yes, but not too many, and of course, the also answer was, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to do that. To your answer, that'll just work its way out over time. But I think you answered his question, that was exactly, we're not going to, this regression line's not a thing that's going to keep moving and keep biting us, it's a snapshot, right?
It's a snapshot in time.
Okay.
And it is hold harmless, we would never recommend reductions in salaries. If I did, nobody would hire me.
Well, thank you for your answer.
I had a couple questions. So word on the street is that most of our neighbors are doing something similar. How was that taken into account when you were doing your research, knowing that everybody, it's like a moving target now, because everybody's looking at the target?
Everybody's looking at targets right now. It's, and they have been, we've been really, really busy for the last year, year and a half. It's a different world right now. I will say that we have done several other studies, right, in close proximity to you guys, and so I can't divulge everything we've done there, but I do go back in and look, because the last thing I'll do is put forward a plan for you, and you're automatically behind something else that I know we're doing.
Talking about moving the lines and implementation again, looking, oh gosh, now we're, you know, three counties around us, the big ones just did something.
Right.
So that sounds good. My next question, I don't, might not be for you, might be for Ms. Dyson's. So the next thing on our new business is to take action with this and show them the money. What has been communicated to staff? Where are we in that process? What do they know about where we are, what their salaries are, do, don't know?
At this point, we only communicated with the directors, just gave them a snapshot of what it will look like. I asked that they not disclose it to staff till waiting till after we had this meeting, we have a formal communication via letter that they can have for their employees, and they can use that as their means of communication back and forth. So at this point, no employee should have been talked to about it, other than just the directors.
And I think Mr. Lumpkin's was going here a little bit, but this is more than just, hey, you're getting a raise. I'm hoping this is more than just, hey, you're getting a raise, this is talking about career pathing and career ladders, and I'm hopeful that we could put a whole program around this, so this is to maximize not just the dollar figure that we're looking at, but also the fact that we're looking at people staying here, making this a place where people can stay, and they could be appropriately rewarded for being here. And then, the last thing I would say is, some of the monies that, well, actually, I'll say that for the next one.
I'll have a follow-up, and this may be for both of you. What would you say to somebody that looked at this proposal and said, it emphasizes tenure over experience or expertise?
With the higher-year parity approach, implementation?
Well, the whole.
In general?
The whole program in general. It emphasizes tenure and kind of leaves out experience and expertise.
I would say no, we started with the baseline of what you currently are doing, and how you're currently bringing people in and recognizing that experience. So we're building off of that and just crosswalking to the new plan. So I wouldn't say it's emphasizing, we're just placing based on that time. People aren't losing ground.
Okay.
So that's how I would address it. But are you valuing tenure? Absolutely, you're valuing tenure.
How do we value expertise?
The placement, the placement when you hire.
The hiring placement, okay. But then, in the beginning, you kind of cautioned us against bringing somebody in at the same, the same level and creating, in addition to compression, your definition of compression, probably creating tension in the workplace, too.
Right. For the most, for most positions, that's not an issue. I think there's always, there's critical need areas where you have to make the decision. If it's really a critical need area, where do you need to place them? And if the market is driving that up, look at where your people are currently placed. Do you need to make an adjustment?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Ken, more than other questions? All right, thanks so much, really appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, now, what are we going to do with all this? So, this, it seems, Cave, oh, there she is.
Okay, so to follow up on that, when you were planning your fiscal year '23 budget, you did budget for this in a very exact amount, so they must have given preliminary figures, but we have in our budget that we're currently one month into, $753,305. We have it sitting in a non-departmental expense category, and now that the study has been completed, we're just asking to make transfers to allocate that money to each department, so they can go ahead and increase their salaries. So that is one change to the FY '23 budget. Another that we're asking for is to have $100,000 that we've had sitting in our assigned fund balance category, given to the sheriff's office. They are working on bringing their CAD system up to date, and they're estimating a cost of a little under $300,000. They have $213,000 budgeted right now, so they're requesting to take $100,000 and put that in their line to spend as well.
Okay, thank you. Board, any questions? Ms. Last one.
Just one, real quick one, thank you. So if we trans, the $553,305, when would that be effective? When would employees see that in paychecks?
They're actually going to see it in the August 15th paycheck.
Okay, that might have been in here somewhere, I think I missed it, but thank you.
Yeah, this is going to be effective August 1st, so they'll see it in their next paycheck.
The 15th, thank you.
Anyone else? And this does not affect the board of supervisors?
Unfortunately, it does not.
Your jobs are priceless.
That's right.
Yeah, ready to check against that. And then, as well, just wanted to kind of, we have accounted for a lot of this money in our previous budget, because we recognize we were doing the study, so we set aside monies for this, correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Awesome. All right, any other discussion? All right, can I get a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just to confirm, these are all transfers or appropriations that were already in the budget or in our assigned balances, fund balances, so there's no increase in the overall budget. Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve this resolution amending the FY 2023 Goochland County budget by transferring $753,305 within the county general fund and appropriating $100,000 in the county CIP fund for the sheriff's office CAD CAD system project, and we authorize transfers that exceed $7,500, as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr., any other discussion?
I have a question on that last, part of that, last part of that motion. I was looking at the resolution, and I was, I think, isn't that an exist, isn't that just a statement of existing?
Authorization.
Right, the 7,500 is a statement, so we're not changing anything with your motion that that's just a statement of existing.
If the transfer was below 7,500, it wouldn't be brought to the board.
That's kind of what I thought, so I mean, when I read it at first, I was like, are we making any change to that?
Right.
And I thought, so that's not really part of the motion, or it's just acknowledging that we're doing this because it's greater than 7,500.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chair, was there a second, or are you waiting?
There was, Ms. Last one.
So I have a question, and Mr. Peterson's preliminary comments when he's making his motion prompted it, it's all in the general fund, I got that, it's coming from a bucket, when I was reading this, called non-departmental expenses?
Correct.
So what is left, I'm assuming there's money in that bucket, that's, what is left in that after we transfer this out?
I am pretty sure Goochland puts all large, like lump insurance payments, so our general liability insurance, our auto insurance, rather than splitting it out amongst each department, they just put it in non-departmental, because it really applies to everybody.
So how do you know we have enough in there to pull out, and we're not going to need to add to that bucket as we go through the year?
No, no, we won't.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this amount that we're transferring is the same number that was in the budget.
Correct.
So this, in the FY '23 budget, when we adopted it, this is the number that was set aside for this benchmark study, so that's why we know it's there.
So that was just, we put it in that, in that account, just?
Right, you knew this was coming, but just not where it would be allocated.
Just as a placeholder, knowing that this was in the works.
Correct, yep. And it came out very close to the actual expenses. So it worked out well.
Pat yourself on the back there.
Wasn't me, let's give Barb credit.
And then, Mr. Chair, just if I could, one more thing, I omitted this in my remarks, this does come before the board of supervisors with a recommendation for approval from the Finance and Audit Committee.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Peterson. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, great. All right, Ms. Cave, the year-end fund balance projection and fund balance assignments.
All right, while I'm pulling this up, I will formally introduce myself, I'm Carla Cave, the Finance Director, fresh here, two months in, but I'm really looking forward to working with you all, especially on the upcoming budget, because that's my main, main project. Okay, so, let me put this in full slide, so you can see it. Okay, so we're going to take a look at the year that ended June 30th, a little over a month ago, and we're going to look at how we shaped up last year. Is everybody with me? Okay. So when we're looking at this, we're mostly talking about the general fund only. The, and I want to say, to begin with also, these are called projections, because we do accrue our revenues and expenses through August 15th, so even though June 30th has come and gone, we still don't really know the final figures, and we will know those very soon, but this is the projection. Our revenues are estimated to be a little over $72 million, which does come over budget by $4.5 million. This sounds like a lot, but everybody knew the assessed values were a lot higher on personal property, which brought in about $2 million over what we expected in personal property taxes. And also, the building department was rocking and rolling, they brought in almost $1 million higher than expected, so they were doing great. The general fund expenses are projected to be $63 million, which comes under budget. This says, oh, okay, our projection exceeds, we are coming under in expenses by $4.3 million. That is due to a lot of position vacancies. We had over $1 million saved, you could say, by unfilled positions in FY '22. We also had $2 million that we budgeted but did not spend, and that was for debt service. We knew we were taking out general obligation bonds. We budgeted an entire year's worth, we didn't need to spend an entire year's worth, because we took them out in February. So that is $3 million, and the rest were just throughout various departments. I will say, non-personnel expenses did use up a lot much of their budget, especially in fuel and some of our maintenance contracts, because as you know, inflation has been happening, fuel costs have been increasing, so it was mostly in the personnel areas. Okay, so the results of that revenue and expenditures comes to a $9.3 million surplus in our operations. After you just look at the day-to-day, we do make a transfer to our capital improvement fund. fund, and a small transfer to our CSA program, the Office of Children's Services. Those total to about $6.5 million, which leaves us, after those transfers, of an increase of $2.8 million in our general fund balance, to give us $44 million. So Goochlin County does have several policies in place for where we like to target our money, where we like to stay to keep ourselves at a good rating, and ensure that should anything happen, which could happen very soon, we're talking about recessions, we have a goal, we don't want to spend any more than 10% from our general fund on our debt service payments in relation to our general fund expenditures of the following budget. We're coming in at 3%, so we're well below that 10%. It says target, but that's really our max, so we're well below that. And our unassigned fund balance, Goochlin has a policy to keep it about 25% of the following year's budget, and we are at $22.4 million for unassigned, and that brings us a little over 27%, so we're doing well in that category as well. So, when you have 44 million, or 40, I think it was 44 million in fund balance, and only a portion of that is unassigned, that's because some of them are allocated to certain projects, some of them are non-spendable, committed, restricted. But the big portion of it, we set aside for other projects that we know we're not spending in FY 23, because they're not budgeted for, but we do want to hold them aside, we don't want to spend them on operating things, like salaries, we want to designate them to specific projects. So, I've listed here some of the larger amounts that we're calling assigned, and these will be listed in the annual finance report, that's why we're gonna come to you and ask if you agree with these, do you see any need to change them? We're looking at $7 million, setting aside for future debt service. We know we've got big projects on the horizon, so we just want to be safe there. We're gonna hold $4.4 million for FY 23 projects, and that transfer, I mean, we're August 2nd today, that transfer has already occurred, that's to fund, that's because our general fund does fund all of our budgeted capital projects. We've got $3 million for future CIP projects, that's FY 24 and beyond, and $1.6 million, hopefully we do not have to use this, but, you know, we are currently in an inflationary period, so we're seeing costs come in for construction projects, maintenance contracts, any big projects, they're coming in 30, sometimes 40% higher than is budgeted or expected. So we want to set aside a little pot of money to cover those in FY 23 as well. We're holding out $1 million for future transportation projects, that's another department that's got a lot going on, we're gonna have a lot of VDOT money, a lot of revenue coming in to support that, but that does come with local matching funds, so we're gonna set $1 million aside for that. There's other smaller amounts, too, but those are the big ones. We, in addition to unassigned fund balance, we also have, as part of Goochlin's policy, a revenue stabilization fund, that is held in the audit report as committed, and we keep just over 3% of the next year's budget there, too. And that's to ensure that if anything crazy happened, we would have money for it. So, we've just gone over the biggest fund balance assignments, and we're gonna draft an audit report, and it'll be presented at the December meeting, most likely, but we ask tonight that you, or today, that you give us your thoughts, let us know that you agree with this, and then, once we get the actual final figures, we will finalize how we're gonna assign the money at the October board meeting. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Johnsons?
So, go back a couple of slides, and where you, if it's easy.
Slide five, I bet.
Well, right, yeah.
This one?
So, and I'll have some more questions, maybe, certainly when my colleagues speak up, but the thing that I paused on was the $1 million for future transportation projects. And I was trying to follow you, where's that money coming from? We have CVTA money.
Yes.
That is, by definition, assigned, is it not? I mean, when we comes in, that has to be assigned, correct?
I think it falls under committed, but yes, yes, it's restricted somehow.
It's not unassigned.
Correct.
It can never be unassigned. So, when I saw that $1 million, I thought, is that, is that what you're planning? I would think our CVTA number is higher than that.
Yes, this is in addition to our CVTA number, this is our general fund. So CVTA has its own fund with its own stream of money, and this is just general fund that we're willing to.
You're not even showing a CVTA.
Correct, this is just general fund only.
So you're saying we're gonna assign $1 million from general fund?
To help support, support them if they need it, yes.
Well, that answers that, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So can I piggyback real quick, Ms. Lesklet? So, are you asking us to, so we reported that because our revenues were up, we have additional monies, and these are the balance, and so we have to decide what to do with that. Are you saying, are you asking us to declare at some point, okay, we had extra money come in from the personal property, and on the revenue side? Are you saying this is what we're to agree on to what to do with some of that money?
Correct, and honestly, assigned categories, they're optional, there are.
That was actually my question, which of these, some, I think you mentioned one was already sent off, so we really don't have any, which ones are we actually making potential decisions on, or do you want us to consider?
Well, the motion, I will put it up here, is to approve, hopefully, the preliminary fund balance assignments, and that will give me the guidance of how to set it up in the audit report, and how it gets drafted. So I just want you to agree or not agree with the way we're laying this out.
Well, that, so if you're asking us, are those dollar amounts right in those categories, I think personally, I need to understand, what do I actually have, what's actually up for debate?
Nothing.
Because you said one is already, it's already August 2nd, this is already gone.
Right, right. That transfer has been made, it was adopted through the FY 23 budget, the 4.4 million, the others are all there just if we need it.
Okay, so all the others, except for that 4.3, we have discretion over?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, like I was saying, there are some counties throughout the state that don't make any assignments, where this money would just fall into unassigned. You know, these assignments are optional, and they don't commit you to anything. The problem there would just be our, it wouldn't be a problem, but it would show our unassigned fund balances, like 60% of our subsequent funds' dollars. So these are just making a plan.
Maybe I can help here a little bit. We go through this process each year, as we get preliminary results, and we say, okay, if there's extra or not enough, you know, how do we, on a preliminary basis, you know, assign, which is available for reassignment later if we want to, but just put a placeholder or earmark this for things that we know are coming? So we try to allocate that, and in this case, it'd be a preliminary assignment today. Today, we're being asked to do a preliminary assignment with the estimated FY 22, which just ended about a month ago, what that excess is, about $4 million, a little less, how we would, on a preliminary basis, allocate that across the assigned categories. And then, once, was it August 15th?
August 15th.
They close the books, once they close the books, she'll come back and say, okay, now we want to do a final allocation of whatever the final budget numbers are. So today would be, the ask is for a preliminary allocation of the year-to-date numbers, and in your board packet, there is the existing allocation of assigned numbers, and perhaps that, in future presentations, might be helpful to have the whole assigned list there, and then just show the differentials, that we're increasing this by this, you know, the deltas. So you can see how the three or four million is being allocated among our existing assignments. I think that would, you know, specifically answer the question, what we're doing, where it's going, and what the net result is. Does that make any sense? Did I have to put aware as before that, or is that?
The lawyer almost understands it, so you're doing okay.
Okay, good. Mr. Chair, has that addressed?
It does.
What you were looking for.
And I'll, Ms. Lesklet, get to her point before, oh. You know, I just, this is, this is the point that we talked about months ago, when people were asking us to lower the personal property rates, to say, we're not gonna spend this as a windfall, so this, this is actually a pretty important time for us to be able to say, we're not taking this money and going and starting new projects that we didn't plan on, we're taking this, the extra revenues, you know, make hay with sunshine, right? To make sure that we are reserving them, so that we are in the best financial position, but not just spending additional dollars that we received.
Perhaps if you could go back to page five, and then come back to the motion later, but page five, if you look at these numbers, a lot of this is debt service or CIP. Debt service, we had a referendum last November passed by the citizens, that gave us the authorization to do $100 million. Midway through, in February, the first week of February, midway through '22, we issued $50 million of general obligation debt. That gave us, I think, five months' worth of debt service in what we're looking at now as the end of FY 22, 6/30/22. There's only a half a year, a little less than half a year of interest and principal on that general. Next year, there'll be a full year of that, plus we haven't issued the other 50 yet either. So we know in the next period of time, two, three, four, five years, whatever, we know we're gonna have a full year of the first GO, 50 million, and then eventually, we're gonna have a full year of the second 50 million, so we know there's a lot of potential increase. Now, the credit rating agencies are aware of all of this, and they gave us our AAA's of county, knowing full well that we had $100 million authorization on the ballot in November, so this isn't a surprise to those folks. But on our financial statements on our books, we're gonna need to figure out how to issue the debt, service the debt, stay within compliance within our ratios, and, and so that's why we're setting up some of these larger reserves. On the capital spending side, we've put out bids for things like the new school, but we've also got a new courthouse, a couple of new firehouses, there's some other additional large capital projects, CIP projects, which again, we are afraid may or may not come in significantly above where we think they are today. So, so that's why you see a lot of CIP and a lot of debt service in the reserves here. And we've, you know, these are for known things that we know are coming, they're just not here yet, and when you have a decent year, and a good year, that's when you build up your reserves, because you don't know what next year's gonna hold, so.
So, I'm hanging on to every word, seriously, because I think this is important. So the $7 million, well, you were talking a little while ago about $4 million, and now I'm seeing there's a lot more than $4 million up here, so are these existing larger? Yeah, this is, this is a combination of what you're looking to add, and what we have in the buckets right now?
Yeah, we're, we're sure that they will be, need to be paid in the next four or five years.
So how, it would help, because I think, I think what you're asking us to do, we have, we have assigned now, these numbers reflect some additions in each bucket.
These will not be put into the FY 23 budget at all, they're just, so we end FY 22 with $44 million, and we have the ability to say to the citizens, or the three people that look at the audit report, here's what we intend to do with this money. Unassigned is typically spent on, a lot of times, increases in salary, operating expenses, but we're saying, of this $44 million, we know we're gonna do some capital projects, we're gonna have a lot of debt service coming up in the next four or five years, we want to set that aside. We don't want that sitting in our unassigned for our emergency fund, should we hit a recession. We want to hold this aside, because we know we will more than likely need it.
So help me understand, what is this, what is this $7 million, 4.43, 1.6, where is it now? Is it a combination of stuff assigned?
It's in our bank account, no, yeah, it's just our fund balance, it's part of our main fund balance. So of your fund balance, you have to allocate it to certain.
Right.
Yeah, so these are.
So is this a portion that is currently unassigned that you're looking to assign?
Correct.
So how did you arrive at the total of these numbers to even think that's what we want to move from unassigned to assigned?
Well, these are our best guesses of what we will need to hold aside, but also, to get at what you're asking, I think, we have a target unassigned percentage that we want to stay at. So, because we have $44 million, if we want 25% of that to be unassigned, say, or 20, so we have a set number that we want to be our unassigned fund balance, and that's 25% of next year's budget.
And you showed us where it's 27.
Correct.
After we do this, does that percentage change?
We're holding at 27. So to get to that 27%, we need to move a certain amount up to assigned, so that's why these numbers total an assigned figure that gets us that 25% in unassigned, or 27%.
27, okay.
If you go to page 66 in the board packet, if you have the board packet handy, page 66 is going to show a complete list of all the assigned and unassigned balances, and the numbers that you see on the screen for the citizens, these take into account what was already in those buckets, and the new allocation from the current, or 6/22, last year's preliminary year-end allocations. So it's a combination of all of that. And on page 66, the future debt service is actually two pieces, one's $6 million, one's $1 million, but the idea is to combine those two for future debt service to get to the seven. The rest of those numbers will line up with what's in your board packet, on the, after giving effect to what we're being considered to do today, what we're being asked to do today.
Thank you.
So if we pass the resolution, these will be the buckets, and they're in the board packet after the fact.
Okay, thank you, I think I got my head around the mechanics. Now philosophically, my reaction, and you touched on this earlier, and we've talked about it before, and Mr. Spooner just talked about, you know, the downside of having too much unassigned, it raises questions. But we move things, we can move things later, in and out of assigned, right, anytime. So I think this is a lot of expressing intentions and plans, being a little more specific. So I would just say, my biggest thing on this is a small thing, maybe, but my biggest thing, looking at this list, is I can think of reasons to not put $1 million in future transportation projects right now. Philosophically.
I think the philosophical is, that's not gonna, it's not gonna fund a large project, but it might fund some studies, to say, what kind of project do we need? So I think we set aside some money that if we, the county, decide we want to do a study, kind of like the Tucko Bridge, that we have the funds set aside to do that.
I'll go ahead and say this, I'll go ahead and say this, thinking that not, nobody's gonna go back and look at all of this. Putting it there, when we're going out looking for money, somebody's gonna look back at us and point to the bucket. If the bucket has a million in it, they're gonna have a response, if that bucket doesn't have that million in it, they might not have that same response.
That question was literally asked three times of me this week, how much do we have for transportation projects in-house?
And if we have it, somebody's gonna say, give it.
It, we're gonna have to decide whether to give it, and it depends on the project, and that's what it's there for, it's, the idea is that we.
I maybe said too much and put it in there, but just, real, just, I wanted to say that just think about, because we could put $5 million in it, and there'll be a need, there's a need, there's an endless need.
There's an endless, again, my understanding of this is, is it might fund studies, but not, it's not gonna fund projects. When they ask how much you have for projects, the answer may be none, how much do you have for studies to prepare for it, then we may have some, but that's what it's there for.
Can we maybe add projects/studies?
Yeah, yeah, for future transportation studies.
Would you accept a friendly amendment?
Oh, absolutely, and that's an assigned balance, which is always subject to reassignment as well, so.
Yeah, we're gonna need the money for matching funds and things like that, but that was just sort of the, as we had kind of moved to the philosophical, but I have the, I understand the mechanics, thank you all for walking us through it.
That was a good conversation, and if I could, I'll try to do my best, Mr. Peterson. So if a citizen came to me and asked what we did with this money, we could, somebody says, hey, we took in a lot more revenue via personal property taxes and real estate taxes than we anticipated. We can say, honestly, we took that money, and we added it to pay down for our future debts, some of it went to projects that were already on the books and underway for this year, future projects that have already been identified through the CIP, we also took and put money aside for inflation and for transportation.
Correct.
And that would be an accurate statement?
Yes.
Good, it's a good statement.
That would be accurate, Mr. Chair, absolutely accurate. On the page 60, that's the next page, we have the actual, the actual budget, oh yeah, you make a jump. To characterize it, in our budget, in our, and I think you mentioned this, Carl, in our operating budget, the residual from the budget first went to fund our annual capital CIP programs, after that, there was very little left over, two to three million, that was then allocated toward our reserves to maintain. our reserves to maintain the ratio of our reserves in relation to our budget, which is increasing with inflation. Because if you don't increase your reserves along with your budget, your ratio of your reserves to your budget starts to decline. That weakens us financially and it might, at some point, might jeopardize our credit rating. So the idea was you need to cover your annual CIP, which we did, and you need to maintain your ratios going forward in order to maintain our quality. So that's where all the money went. And beyond that, there wasn't, you know, virtually nothing left after that. So that's kind of where the answer is on last year's budget.
So CYA in your world is cover your annual.
No comment. All right, board, do I have a motion?
I think you did. I think we've just been discussing-
No, no.
We were discussing.
No, I, we don't, we don't-
I don't think we did.
We don't have a motion on this one.
But you all agree with the distribution?
Yeah.
No changes, except change V dot to projects.
Yeah.
Or studies.
Projects to studies.
Studies.
So the amendment would be a wording amendment, not a, a dollar amount amendment? And, okay, fair enough. I will mention this before I do the motion, that this was discussed in the Finance and Audit Committee, and it comes before the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation from the Finance and Audit for approval. That said, I'm going to make a motion here, I think. Mr. Chair, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors approve the June 30, 2022 preliminary fund balance assignments as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lescollette. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, if my chart-
Thank you.
Right. We just have one more thing, a very important thing. I have too much paper up here. We're going to look at appointing some folks to the CVTA. Board, we're looking to appoint Austin Goan as a member and Tom Coleman as alternate for county staff representatives to a two-year term effective August 1, 2022 to July 31, 2024. Can I please get a motion to, or discussion or question?
I would say so. Moved, but I think we want to make, is, is that supposed to be to the TAC? To the CVTA TAC? Is that what that's appointed to?
Yes, I think that's what this refers.
Yeah, so I-
It's a newer committee.
No, I think it's, it might be the CVTA TAC.
That's what I'm thinking, CVTA.
He's just saying right now, the amendment only says to the CVTA, which certainly not serving on the board of the CVTA.
Right, it should be TAC.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that, I move that we appoint Austin Goan as a member and Tom Coleman as an alternate as our county staff representatives to the Central Virginia Transportation Authority Technical Advisory Committee.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lomkins and Ms. Lescollette. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. If my list is right, we are at our recess for dinner. See everybody back here at 6 o'clock. Come early and get your seats.
How are you?
Good.
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 Good.